Call order and by use of the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public.
...under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I would like everybody to stand for a moment. We will have a moment of silence for Robert Campbell, affectionately known as Bobby Campbell, supervisor of sanitation who passed away on Sunday. He worked for the township for 46 years. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call.
Councilmember Brecher.
Here.
Councilmember Coyle.
Here.
Councilmember Deal.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Councilmember Joshi.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Ship Freeman.
Present. Okay, I'm gonna start with a...
Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, has been provided by non-union notice sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star-Looker, and the Sentinel, and News India Times on December 13th, 2019, and posted in lobby municipal complex on that same date.
Council President Mark.
Oh, Council President Mark. I would be remiss if I did not mention John Lewis, who was a civil rights icon, since he was a very young student, beating within an inch of his life for the civil rights movement, and passed away on Friday night. I also would like to say, at this particular time, that I'm very disturbed by the tone that this town has taken now with the Board of Ed, with the Library Board, with the council meeting. When people seem to disagree, they don't do it civilly. What they take and do is, they say disparaging remarks against each other. Now, I know, because I've been in the school and I've been adjunct for the college. This type of behavior, I do not want young people that may get involved in politics to think is okay. I think that most of the time, we should respectfully disagree. You're not every name and every disparaging thing in the book if you don't agree with me. We should learn that, and we should set an example, because we are adults. And I'm just saying that, I grew up in this town. This behavior was, when with civility, people that didn't agree with you, they just didn't vote with you, and they explained why they didn't. They didn't resort to calling you names. They didn't resort to saying, "You're doing favors for this one." They stuck to the topic. And that's what I want us to get back to. I think civility is the best. And those are my remarks, because there are a lot of standing giants that got there to their point without disparaging other people. Thank you very much. Now, we'll go with unfinished business, ordinances for further consideration in the public hearing on the final adoption. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the Township Code, Chapter 7, Section 7-14, to prohibit parking on a portion of national road within the township at all times.
Okay, this is open to the public. Any public raising their hand?
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Gomez, second.
Councilmember Brecher.
Yes.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi. Councilmember Joshi.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, we're for new business, which means the public will not be speaking on it. New business proposal ordinances for public hearing set down for Wednesday, August 26, 2020. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the Township of Edison authorizing the sale of township-owned real property no longer necessary for a public purpose and establish the procedures therefore concerning Block 296, lots 37 and 38 on the tax mass of the township, more commonly known as 31 Fox Road.
Motion to introduce.
Council President, I move this ordinance to be passed on first reading according to law on hearing date for August 26, Wednesday, August 26, 2020.
Second.
Any council comments? No council comments? Okay, fine.
Councilmember Brecher.
Yes.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes.
Okay. Next. Okay, ordinance, 2074, 2020. Ordinance amending various sections. Go ahead.
An ordinance amending various sections of the Township Code to incorporate recommendations from the water and sewer utility and to establish fees for users of the water system, including a connection fee.
Motion to introduce.
Council President, I move this ordinance to be passed on first reading according to law for date of August 26, 2020.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, all right.
Councilmember Brecher.
Yes.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes. Okay. Anyone would like to pull anything for the...
No, no, no. We're gonna open the public...
Wait. Wait a second. It's dark in here. Okay, all right. All right, it's open now for the public comment on these resolutions. Open public comment. Do we have any hands raised?
Elizabeth Conway.
All right.
Did you not?
Elizabeth Conway. All right, Elizabeth Conway.
Hi, Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. I just have a question on, there's four different areas in town that are going to go over to the planning board as areas of redevelopment. Is there any specifics that you know about where, or what's going to happen to these areas? One of them is the golf range on Inman Avenue. Another one is over where the roller skating rink used to be. And then the two of them are Oak Tree Road, which are, each and every one of them is a large parcel. And whenever I hear the planning board and redevelopment, I kind of get a little leery. And I wouldn't want it to turn out to be that it does get turned over for a good reason initially, but then, because the redevelopment takes place, we don't know what happens after that until sometimes it's too late for the public to really react. So I was just wondering, at an early stage, before it gets turned over, if the town council has any thoughts about what they would like to do with these properties before they hand them over to the planning board? That's my first question. Do you want me to tell you my other ones all together? Or do you want to do it one at a time?
Oh, you can, well, you can tell them, tell us you got, you know, you have your six minutes, so you can tell us all now.
Okay. My second one would have to do with, I guess, those four areas. Since they are such large areas of land, could this be incorporated first into the master plan of the township? And then be decided, once we have an idea of what it would be good for the town to have there? And then we could put it to the planning board to look for redevelopment with our thoughts in mind? That's my second one. And my third one was, I was at your budget hearing at the end of June, and I was a little, I don't want to say shocked, but I was questioning why, at almost July, we were still talking about a 2020 budget. Now, it's almost August, and that's not on the agenda tonight. Is there any way we could find out what the status of the budget is? And that's my three questions. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Council President, I can address the redevelopment unless other council, unless some members of the council want to talk about it. But perhaps it's best if I start procedurally. All that's happening right now, is there gonna be a review of all these various areas? Various council people have thought those were various areas of town that needed investigation. But this is just an initial process to see if this comports with the area need analysis as set forth by the legislature in the statute. It wouldn't, nothing is going to happen with the property. The first step is to say whether it is an area in need. And then if it is, that will come back to the township, down to the council. Council will make a final determination to declare it an area in need. And then, to the extent the council wants to move forward, the mayor and council want to move forward with investigating what to do with those properties, that would be the next step. And that, again, would have to be, it would have to be initiated by council, sent over to the planning board. Actually, to your second question, one of the things the planning board is charged with is determining whether there is consistency with the master plan. And that would be in the report that would come back, and that would also be in the plan itself. That specifically needs to be addressed. But that would be down the road. That would, right now, this goes over to the planning board, they do an investigation, and they make a recommendation back to council. And then, then you move forward with any uses of the area. Right now, it's just the determination of what are the existing conditions in those properties.
Thank you. Is that sufficient? Is that sufficient, Elizabeth?
Oh, I...
Is that sufficient, Elizabeth? Hello?
You asked unmute me.
Okay.
I just hope, I'm just hoping that, you know, it does run as smoothly, and that the public gets to see each and every step. That would be fabulous if it worked that way. And I would just, would be very pleased if we did take it step by step, and the public was taking along the ride. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask one thing? The master plan, when was the last time it was done? So they would have to go along with the existing master plan? How old is that?
That is 2011. It's due to be updated in 2021.
Okay. So would we best be waiting till 2021 to decide what our needs truly are, then? That's just around the corner.
I don't know, that, you know, because, I mean, it's COVID, so I wouldn't, our needs might be greater than we have, so, because of this COVID situation, and I'm hearing it's getting ready to come up again in September, you know, it's like the people, they don't really know what type of school they're gonna have in September, or hybrid, or whatever. I know, a lot of stuff is, is, is just different.
Yeah. Okay, so then this can go along with it, be held back also?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
And what about the budget?
Ms. Conway, the Finance Committee is in process of going through everything with the budget, and I'm also meeting with individual council people on their ideas, and we're also waiting for our CARES Act allocations, and how the state will possibly be able to let us use that, those funds that we may or may not get for a reduction.
Very good, thank you. I just have one more thing, but it's not on resolution, so I'll wait till later. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Maria Orket.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to go over, there was a resolution proposing for Facebook. I remember previously, a resolution was put forth for 8,000. Now, this one is for 12,000. Do we have a breakdown, and what does that cover, that equipment?
Jim?
Do we have breakdown?
Yeah, so this equipment is to modify the council chambers, to make basically the council chambers a conference room, without having a lot of the audio issues that we would have if everyone was on a microphone. And that allows to broadcast over Facebook, as well as integrate with Zoom, so we can start talking about possibly hybrid meetings, where the council might come to the council chambers, and everyone else would stay home. Right now, we can't do that, because the system doesn't integrate well with that stuff. So it's all part of that project. And it's also, we're gonna try and get CARES money to fund that in the future as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
No one else?
Anyone else? Okay, all right.
You know, I want to add one thing related to what Ms. Conway said, and it pertains to redevelopment. And when I met Village President Sheena Calum, essentially the mayor of South Orange, she brought up an interesting point, and I learned this right when I got onto the council, that she actually had her whole town declared in need of redevelopment, just to study what can or cannot be done there. And I found that to be a very interesting concept. At the time, she had a lot of pushback from what happened, because people, you know, perceived it to be the worst-case scenario. But when she did the whole town, all of South Orange altogether, they were able to see what work needs to be done in different parts of town. And I think this is, I know we disagree a lot on the council, but this is something that I thought was pretty exciting, that pretty much every, yeah, every single council member here agreed that there are, that we should definitely be investigating whether they need to be, you know, redeveloped, beautified, how can we make positive changes? And I'm excited to see everything on here. I mean, we have the train station, we have, I mean, these are, these are areas that we've talked about for a long time, but this, I can say, is a big step forward in terms of, one, all of us on the council being able to work together, and actually making progress for, you know, a better Edison overall.
All right, thank you very much, then. Then, I still take in consideration, you talk of South Orange, I know South Orange, East Orange, West Orange, and all that. And then we gotta look at the size of Edison, so it will take us a little bit longer for us to do stuff that South Orange does, believe me.
I understand, I'm just saying, the whole areas under, we're doing pieces, though.
No, no, but I applaud that, you know, it's, you know, that's like, Metuchen can do stuff that we can't do, because they, within that limited amount of time. I know, I know the size of Edison, and its growth and everything, and I was looking into some of the different things, too, for some of the different projects, and, you know, all projects take startup money, a lot of projects do, so we gotta be very careful in the direction in which we go. Okay. No other public comment? You got somebody else public? That was Maria. Marie, are you satisfied with your answer? Okay, all right.
Move to close the public portion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Anything, anyone would like to pull for a separate vote on the agenda, on the consent agenda?
Council President, I think I'm looking at 338.
I don't know what evidence is. It's be a roller rink. Yeah? It's be a roller rink.
I know, it's what she said. I can't think of that one. Oh, I know, okay.
It's be Marshall's back there.
Oh, back there on Wood Avenue.
Yeah. Oh, okay, that's where that is, okay. Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right.
Council President.
Second.
So wait, what's Joe? He moved it, right? Councilmember Coyle?
I just, I'm fine, I just have a question. 338, did he say 338?
Yes, he said 338.
Then someone just, I don't have that, I don't have that on my copied agenda, and I can't fit into my, just tell me which one, Mr. Brecher.
I'm hoping that that's the Mount McDonald one?
No.
No, that's...
No, no.
No. No. Mount McDonald's not 338.
Oh, it's not?
That's a, that's a redevelopment.
Oh, no. Yeah, I'm looking to pull the Mount McDonald one.
To the...
Councilman Brecher, you making me work?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Council President. I can't find, I can't find the actual part here, because they have the screen open now.
It's 383.
It's 383. So I can nix the other one, Councilman Brecher?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Now, does Councilman Coyle have one that he wants to pull?
Council President, I don't have anything, but just a clarification to the clerk, if she can make that correction of Mr. Brecher's mistake, so that we know that that other one is not pulled, that's all.
Okay. Mr. Brecher is pulling Resolution 383-072020. It is for the authorization of professional services for Mount McDonald's.
Okay, so can we have a...
He's not pulling 338.
All right, so you...
338 will be on the consent agenda, so now do we have a...
Now, can we have a motion to approve everything?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Can I get a second? Roll call.
Councilmember Brecher.
Yes.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes.
So now we have pulled 3830720, Councilmember Brecher.
Uh, no.
No, you, all right, you don't have a reason? You just saying no?
All right, so you want to...
Well, yes, what happened was, I gave my reasons at our work session.
At Monday?
Yes, and it's the same reason.
Okay. Okay, so now, do we have a motion to, are you making a motion, Councilman Brecher, or somebody has to make a motion whether to approve or...
A motion to adopt 383?
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Councilmember Brecher.
No.
Councilmember Coyle.
No.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
No.
Councilmember Patel.
No.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Well, I'm gonna, explanation of why I should, why I'm saying yes, because there's a whole lot of other projects and stuff that we would like to start, and if we don't, we don't take care of this and get this started, all the rest of the projects will then be on hold. So that's my reasoning for yes, because I want us to move along, and I just don't want us to be stuck in the mud the whole time. Thank you.
Well, it failed, because there's four notes.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but I just wanted to let people know that, because of the failure of this, when the public asked me about why these other projects weren't started or completed, I want them to know, this is why I, you know, I voted that way. Oh, okay.
Well, we got, we have communications received. Everybody, did everybody receive them by email, we said?
Yeah.
Just double check, right? Everyone should have received the communications by email?
Everybody received the communications. I think one was for Eagle Scout project, and one letter was received from the Open Spaces Advisory Committee.
Yes, one by Bob.
Bob talked about that at Monday night.
I just received...
And I don't, I think you received the Eagle Scout project for Capestro, for Capestro Park. I had, I had spoken with the, the mother of the Eagle Scouts earlier, and they sent their correspondence to Councilmember, Councilmember Coyle, and after when they write up the proposal, it would go to Maureen, and it would go to Bill Thomas at this particular time. So I don't see any problem with, people approving it, I don't see any problem at all. Now...
Council President.
Yes. Motion to accept? Yes. Councilmember Coyle.
Council President, first, thank you for supporting the Scouts Eagle Project. And while we're on that note, the interest of the scout is to also put a brand-new sign at Capestro Park, in the hope that he can raise the money for a brand-new sign. Will the township participate, since the township, it is a township sign? Is there any participation we may get from the township in funds?
Yes, I asked, I asked about that, and I spoke back with the mother, and said that she should have that built in the proposal.
Okay, great, thank you, Council President. I accept.
Okay, so, all right, is motion to accept?
Motion to accept? Motion to...
Motion to accept.
All right.
Hold a favor?
All right, okay. Now, we would like to have a, we would now open to the public.
Council President.
Okay, this is to oral petitions and remarks.
Council President.
Yes.
If I don't mind, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just don't know when it's appropriate, if you haven't said already, but it's, it was Councilman Sam Joshi's birthday yesterday. I think he turned 35.
31.
I'm sorry, was it 31? I'm sorry.
31.
I got the number mixed up on Facebook, I apologize. I thought it was...
Happy birthday, Sam.
Thank you.
And just while... And Council President, I did miss the beginning of the moment of silence. Thank you, Councilman Gomez, for Bob Campbell, and I just wanted to say, what a dedicated employee, and what a big loss that is in Township. The Bob Kim, Bob Kim, I know, had a historic knowledge of this town, and was involved in multiple, multiple projects, in the sewer, and paving, and every department. A big loss to his fellow coworkers in the Township of Edison, and our residents, and I'm terribly sorry to hear of this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Excuse me? All right, Elizabeth Conway.
Hi, now I can say anything, correct?
Yes, and so forth.
Okay. I'd like to thank Maureen for sending the pavement schedule to me for the township, and... township, and, um, I looked up where I live and my surrounding, um, blocks, and we seem to all be in a pink zone, which is considered poor, and it says the paving year is one through five. Could I just have an explanation of one through five? Does that mean, when did the, the first year was, the earliest I saw was 16, so does that mean we're up to year four? Because I know they've been doing, um, a number of roads off of Feather Bed, which is kinda close, but I was just looking to see, uh, when, um, the other roads in my neighborhood would be, uh, worked upon, because being, um, held at home for quite a bit, it allows for many people to go out walking, and, uh, I would hate for somebody to get hurt, but if I knew that we're getting closer from my neighborhood, I'd truly appreciate it. So it says paving years, one and two is for really poor priority, and then the pink one, which is poor, says year one through five, and that's what many of the blocks in my neighborhood are, I believe, in the pink zone, so, um, I hate to bother you, Maureen, I, I, it's something that I keep annoying you with, but, um, I was wondering if just more clarification would be coming.
Um, no, you're not bothering me, uh, we said, you know, we really are trying to get to anybody that's in, in that section, in, you know, years one through five, so I, I would say, you know, with confidence, it would be in the next year or so.
Good. Thank you.
Uh, Andrew.
Andrew.
Sorry, I thought we were voting.
Excuse me, sir?
Uh, sorry, I thought we were voting, uh, my mistake.
No one else?
All right, that was it, that was it? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public portion? Huh? Hold on, hold on, what was it?
Uh, Char- I guess Charlie Crowe.
Ooh, I forgot. Oh, shoot, I forgot to give my report, because I listen to Charlie.
Charlie.
Yes, hello, members of the council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, um, just wanted to follow up and make sure that you all received my email today. I did look into the questions that you had, uh, raised, okay, I'm seeing that you did get it, great, so, I won't belabor the point, since I did speak at length at your last meeting, but, uh, if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them, you can contact me, and I also, uh, am in the process of obtaining the contracts from New Brunswick and Piscataway that the council vice president had asked for, and also want to wish him a happy belated birthday, too, uh, but, uh, but thank you for considering this, and, and just, uh, uh, if I could close with just a, a question, um, what is the date that the petition was certified that starts the, uh, the, the period, uh, that follows that under the statute? I didn't, I didn't hear anything tonight about it.
I had that in the other day.
Yeah, it's, I, I, I believe, Mr. Crowe, it is August 12 would be when the, uh, the ordinance would be on for a vote, as, as you know, you're familiar with this, the statute as well, um, the, when it is submitted by the clerk, it is deemed introduced, you know, as if the ordinance had already been introduced, so then it would be up for a vote at the next council meeting, and don't hold me to it, but I thought I remember hearing August 12. But whatever the next council meeting is, uh, is, is the, uh, would be the public hearing and final vote on this ordinance.
Terrific, well, I'm looking forward to that vote, and, uh, just if I can, what's the date of the introduction, the official, uh...
Monday.
It was, okay, so, so the...
Yeah, Monday, Monday was when it was submitted to council.
Okay, excellent, well, well, thank you all for your time and consideration, I hope you have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Oh, Charlie?
Yeah?
Are you there?
I am here.
Could you just, I didn't, I didn't see the email you sent to the council, could you just please make sure we get a copy of it?
Oh, of course, I'll forward it right now.
And then, Mr. Crowe, since you're, you, it sounds like you might be agreeing with things, one of the things I would ask that you do, I... Why with it, but when you're sending some... If you don't, if, just BCC everybody, instead of CCing them, because if, if, if someone were to hit reply all, it could create an Open Public Meetings Act problem, so just trying to avoid that, uh, by BCC, you could avoid that.
Okay.
So that's my request, sir, thank you.
Understood, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm. Esther Barkin?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good evening, everybody, um, I'm Esther Barkin, and I would like to speak to you in support of the Community Choice Energy Aggregation Initiative that was committed to council, and as you may know, I am one of the petitioners. I think Charlie Crowe made a very compelling case for this program when he spoke before council this past Monday evening, and I would call it a no-brainer for moving this township forward environmentally. Uh, this initiative will give our residents the option to purchase increasingly renewable electric energy at bulk rate savings until we reach 100% renewable sources by 2029. I, I think that as the fifth-largest township in New Jersey, Edison should be in the forefront of environmental sustainability leading the way, um, and I think we are more dependent now on our state and local communities to provide sustainable options, since our federal government doesn't seem to be responding so well, so that we can reduce pollution, breathe clean air, and live a healthier life. Currently, the air in our county really needs improvement, and has been rated F by the American Lung Association. So this energy aggregation program is an economical way for our residents to segue into 100% renewable energy at an affordable, cost-cutting price, joining other communities like New Brunswick, Piscataway, Livingston, Maplewood, South Orange, and others which have already done this, and there's savings for their residents, and yet residents will still have their familiar utility, deliver the energy, and we, uh, produce the bill. They can opt out if they choose, and they will also have the option of selecting 100% renewable energy now, rather than phasing it in. So, I believe that this program will not take away anyone's rights or choices, so I urge the council to approve this initiative at their, when, when they're scheduled to do so. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Ashwari DeRosa?
Ashwari?
DeRosa? Did you spell it?
Ashwari?
Ashwari, yeah.
Yes.
Um, oh, so hello, um, just as Charlie and Esther said, as a citizen of Edison, I would just like to, again, express my support in regards to the Community Choice Energy Aggregation Program. Um, I think Esther summarized it quite well, and personally, I don't see anything wrong with offering residents cheaper and cleaner energy than what they're currently getting, and just like Esther said, anyone has the option to opt out of the program and continue receiving energy from their current provider, so I won't be long, but I just wanted to say I urge the council to approve the Community Choice Energy Aggregation Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Josephine P.
Josephine?
Josephine, I need...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, and I, 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 I need addresses.
Hi, um, hi, my name is Josephine, I'm a resident of Edison, um, uh, 255 Hannah Road, um...
Thank you.
Yes, and I wanted to say that, um, I want to support, uh, the Community Choice Aggregation, and what that is basically is, um, that will be, um, receiving renewable energy to power our homes, and like, our electricity can be coming from, um, resources of solar power and renewable, um, resources, which I've been studying, um, since like, college about, and this is really the, the step forward, um, that we can, that we can make to do, like, um, against, ah, that we can take action, um, for climate change, um, and, um, do our part, um, because it's really like a, a technical revolution, um, technological revolution from like, uh, coal, burning, burning coal, burning oil, and burning gas, like, that, um, we have now, like, evolved and advanced our technologies where we can actually produce energy and generate energy from the sun, we, it absorbs heat, and that, uh, produces into electricity. So this is like a really remarkable thing, because it cuts off our dependence on polluting our world, um, and emitting greenhouse gases, so that, uh, we can ha- power our houses and have light and stuff, we could literally get that same electricity from renewable energy now, and, um, I really want the, our governments to kind of step in and allow, um, our energy supplies to be from renewable energy, um, and like, really take that initiative. Um, we are in the town of Thomas Edison, and I feel like the person who made the lightbulb and electricity, that was back in 1800s, and we're in 2020, so, um, I think it's time that we advance technologically, um, to the, uh, technologies that are available for us right now. Um, and yeah, uh, that's really, I'm very enthusiastic about this, and I think it's a really good idea that our homes be powered with renewable energy, because it is possible. I have solar panels at my house in Piscataway, but I live in Edison, and my parents' house, um, they have solar panels, and they actually got money back, and they save money on their bills, like, um, for electricity, they didn't have to pay so much on their bills, because they're producing electricity to, um, run the house, and we also made so much energy that we gave some of that energy that we generated to other houses, um, and, and we got a check back for, in our taxes, and we got like, some credit back, because we made energy just from having solar panels on our roof, and I think we should take this action, yeah. Do I still have time? I, I'm pretty much, pretty much what I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. Next.
Andrew?
Can we do Andrew? Andrew?
During resolutions.
Okay, Andrew, Andrew.
Uh, hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Address, sir.
My address is at 44 Walnut Street, Edison, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I, I, I would like to vote for the Community Choice Aggregation, um, the, whether the federal government, what that does, it's really not, I think, the most important way of changing, the most important way that people change in America is at the local level, on upwards, it's always going to be at the smallest to the big, um, that's the best way of changing, and we have a good opportunity right now to change in the grassroots type way, uh, at the local level first, and then build way, way upward, but how are we going to build upwards if we can't even be the, the local first? So, I, I, I vote for the Community Choice Aggregation, uh, I, I know solar panels can help a lot of homeowners save money back, but with the whole, you know, stagnant wages, rising costs, you know, how are homeowners gonna pay for them, for themselves, they already have quite a few, uh, expenses, you know, basic living expenses keep getting more expensive every year, um, so, that's, that's why I'm voting for Community Choice Aggregation.
Thank you. Next.
John Su, Shu?
John Shu?
Hello, hi, everyone, this is John, Edison, New Jersey, 219 West Shirley Avenue. Um, just like everyone before me, I'd like to support for the, uh, Community Choice Aggregation. I appreciate, uh, the meeting on Monday, and Charlie spoke to describe it, and also I appreciate all the questions, the good questions you guys, you, um, all the council people had, and we showed that we've been thinking about this issue, um, and we're taking it very seriously, and, uh, I really appreciate that, and, uh, just, uh, I'd like to encourage you to just keep an open mind for this, and keep, keep looking for it, and uh, there's...
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Next.
Uh, Keith Voos.
Keith who?
Voos.
Keith, Keith what?
Bob or Voos.
Keith, Bob, Keith Bob.
My name is Keith Voos, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Uh, I live...
Andrew? Yeah, okay.
All right, I live at Three Park Lake Drive in North Brunswick, the reason I am testifying at, at this, um, meeting is that I am the Environmental Justice Chair of the Metatchen Edison NAACP, and it is a, it is a well-known and very sad fact that the effects of air pollution, the public health effects of air pollution from fossil fuel facilities and, and other, um, industrial plants fall most heavily on people of color, and therefore I am here to speak up for a move that would reduce pollution, not only for people of color, but for everyone, therefore bring public health benefits to, uh, various communities. Uh, I myself have lived in New Jersey now for 22 years, moved here from a real, a small town in the Midwest, and found that, uh, the, the reduction in air quality from a small town to metropolitan area like this was, was quite shocking, and I would really like to see, um, Edison take the lead in moving to clean energy generation, and at the same, and as you do that, you save, uh, you save township residents money, uh, on their bills, that's just an obvious win-win for me. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
No one else?
I see. Do more, add on, all right.
Public portion? Second.
Councilman Coyle, second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Got that? All right, good night. Everybody in favor? Bye.
Bye. Good night.
Good night, Dan.